...of the Papa Bluff City Council. Please rise for an invocation by Pastor Pam Sharp from Grace Christian Fellowship Church.
Father, we are so grateful for our city. We are so thankful, Father, for the many wonderful things that are going on in our city. And, Lord, we do realize that there is favor on our town. And, Lord, we don't take that for granted. We thank you for the many, many, many people, men and women, over the many years that have worked so diligently to see this happen. And, Lord, we thank you for those people. And we also thank you, Father, for the newly-elected officials on our city council. And, Father, pray that there would be unity in our city, that there would be peace and righteousness, Lord, because you tell us that righteousness exalts a nation, Lord. And we understand that that begins with each of us as we live rightly toward you, toward others, Father, that we can live in unity. And, Father, that doesn't always mean agreement, but it means to be able to disagree and to work out details in a right manner, Lord. Any of us in leadership understand that, Father, that that is just a given, Lord, that we will have disagreements. But, Father, when we do, Father, I pray that we would come to a place where we come to reason and that our rule of thumb, Father, our plumb line, would be your word and righteousness. And, Father, I pray that continued favor on this city. Pray, Father, for guidance in each of these city council members and our mayor, Father, as they do their duties, that they be clear-minded and, Father, that they look to you for their guidance. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Councilwoman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Seven.
Disclosure of interest: any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
I have a conflict with action-required items, number, or BB, Bill Number 7694, because my husband is working for the firm that works on that project. So I'm just going to step out during that. Does anyone else?
Citizens' input: each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Hello.
Jim Fisher, oops, I'm sorry.
State your name and address.
Jim Fisher, 606 Selma Street. I'm here representing the Butler County Fair Board to request permission to have a fireworks display at Clinton Park on 4th of July.
Okay.
So. This is Madam Mayor, this is common, they come every year. They ask for permission, and I think they probably have already spoke with the fire department.
Correct.
And made arrangements and they put on a fantastic display. Everybody goes down and sees that. It brings a crowd from all over the county and then some counties next to us. And I would recommend we provide any help we could for this.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Purple approval.
Purple approval? Is everyone okay with allowing for the fireworks?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Looks like you're good. Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Mayorin Decker, 592 County Road 422 in Papa Bluff.
Okay.
And I just have a couple of questions that I'd like to address the council with. My first question I'll address to Councilman Johnson, you may have the most knowledge on it. Do you know why the, or could you tell me if the planned annexation of the apartment buildings off of W Highway is going to go through or, you know, what the status of that is?
On the, just right off, right there at W.
Yes.
Well, the staff was, they came before the plan and zoning and asked us to be annexed into the city, certain, one set of apartments, then another set of apartments, then another set of apartments, like three or four times, however many apartments. And I think we tabled it, I'd have to go back and look and see, because we felt that it all needed to be in at one time, the whole thing, or nothing, you know, not parts, because we felt that the buildings weren't being inspected by the city at particular time being built.
Uh huh.
They were being, they were being built, then they wanted to annexed in, and we felt it weren't being inspected correctly. So it was tabled and then they, then they pulled it away from the, being annexed.
Okay.
The person that was wanting to annex, and I can't, I can't think of his name right now, but I believe that's the way it went. I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but I'm pretty sure that's the way it went.
Okay. So after the inspection issues are resolved, do you think there's still a chance?
Yes.
At a pretty big apartment complex?
Yes, yes, there's a chance to have the electric and water and all of those inspected and proven, brought in. I don't see a problem with it. But it was tabled, I believe.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and check for sure.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Next question. Councilman Tinsley. Historically, the job of city council and mayor has been a volunteer position. What are your thoughts on if the taxpayers should be asked to pay city council members and the mayor for their services?
I don't know. I volunteer an awful lot. I've never considered getting paid. I will tell you, it's a very time-consuming, it's a lot more time-consuming than I thought it would be, but I haven't entertained that.
Do you feel it would be, it would be right to ask the taxpayers to spend their money on that?
I don't know. You know, the county commissioners are paid, and I believe we handle just about as much responsibility as they do. I don't know.
Okay. All right. Anyone else like to weigh in on that?
I would.
Go ahead.
I've volunteered on several boards, and I've never wanted to be paid. And I don't feel, I mean, that I need to be paid for this. This is my duty back to the city to help serve for it.
Thank you.
And I just feel that that's the way it should remain.
Thank you.
You know, a volunteered service.
And I agree with Damon.
Thank you.
There are some councils that, and actually, there's Farmington is a prime example, I think, if I recall right, they pay their council members, but that's just not anything that I would think pops up at every expense. Kind of like Mr. Johnson, you run to represent, not to, this is not a money-making job. There is a lot of time spent, I will agree. You spend a lot of time, you'll spend a lot of money. You'll be here and there spending money, but it's more for the good of the community and not for, for people to make money.
Okay. Thank you. My final question is for Mayor Pearson. It's been almost a year since the documents were turned over to the multiple agencies that were asked to do investigations into the wrongdoings. Now that you have full access to the documents, have you discovered anything else that you have sent to the investigators, or do you know the status of those investigations?
I don't know the status. I can't really talk about some of it because there's pending litigation. And a lot of the stuff that you're talking about is hung up in that.
Well, a lot of the stuff that I'm asking about is the stuff that was made public so easily earlier.
It's still, it's still, oh.
Discovered. I'd just like some closure to it. It's been nearly a year. Do you know what the status is?
I have not been given any status. It's not been a year. It's actually September. It was done in September.
Close, yes.
So, no, I've not been, they've not followed up with me. I gave it to them. I'll let them go with it. That was the end of it, you know. I let them do what they wanted to do with it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I don't think they typically follow up with reporters, if that makes any sense to you.
But it doesn't, I don't understand.
I don't know.
Were you a reporter at the time? Are you talking about like a whistleblower-type reporter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's what you're referring, yeah.
Yes, yes. My main question is, now that you have full access to all documents.
Oh, no, I'm not been able to.
Part of your concern earlier was that.
Right.
That you hadn't been given access.
Right.
Well, since you do now have full access, have you been able to discover anything else that was otherwise off-limits to you?
Okay, I understand your question now. I've not been able, I've not had the time to dig around any further, but I will be digging further.
Okay. Any expected date on when you might have something to offer the citizens as far as any further investigations that you have found?
Actually, I would really expect the entities that have that information, if they wanted to proceed with it, if they felt that it was something that they, that they thought was something they needed to look into, let them look into it. If they thought it was something that needed to be looked into, then go for it, you know. If not, then they don't. But if I find something, certainly I would tell the citizens about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Workshop items. The city council will review proposals for the lease purchase of fire trucks for the Papa Bluff Fire Department.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I enclosed in your packet a spreadsheet, and I put the capital improvement sales tax from 2015 out to 2022. I used a one-and-a-half percent growth rate. I think that's fairly conservative. Also listed on there are 2009 bond payments, which bonds will be paid off in 2018. Then we also have a loan with the Missouri Transportation Finance Committee with, and MoDOT for the, our portion of the 67 Oak Grove Interchange and the Business 67 Oak Grove Signalization and Interchange. And then I put in a fire truck payment of $126,424 a year for five years. And then at the end, it shows the amount remaining for each department. And I feel like we can do this. I guess we just need direction tonight on whether you want us to pursue looking for new trucks, bidding out trucks. If you have any questions about this financial information, I'll be happy to answer.
I know I'm jumping a little bit ahead on the agenda, but Item D, actually, if everybody looks at their package on Item D, we're going to start receiving about $98,000 a year for the next five years from the library for over, I guess we have, I don't want to say this incorrectly, basically, it was a, I would call it a loan, now they, they're their own entity.
Yes.
And they're going to be paid. So this is actually, there's $98,000 a year that we can, that's not earmarked for any other project at this time. So we're not really going to be out approximately $28,000 a year for two brand-new fire trucks.
Well, the only, only thing is, on our library balance sheet, we actually have that listed as a negative $489,000, so that money would go back. It'll actually probably all go into general fund once the library's washed out, so.
Do you have anything you wanted to add, Chief Stucker?
No. You have any questions for me? I also added some information on warranty from one of the companies. I don't know if all of you got that, or Mr. Russian, did you get that?
I didn't see it.
Didn't see it.
I've got it here.
What was the warrant, what was the warranty breakdown for the trucks?
It's just different things, components that are recovered, like transmission, engine, the different warranties on the different components of the truck.
How long were they, how long were they running, do you know?
They list multiple things on the fire trucks, different years warranties.
Different things, three years, 10 years, five years.
Five, five years on the engine, one year. It looks like the bank leases, got some good interest rates.
Yeah, we contacted 10 local banks, and every one of them was pretty good with us.
And also didn't mention, we'd be, we've got $330-something thousand budgeted this year. That would be used basically for a down payment, and then we'd finance the remaining approximately $600,000.
Now, they don't have the, they don't have the electrical broken down on a separate issue, do they? Is that tied in with engine?
No, they do not.
Okay. So that'd be with the engine, wouldn't it? Five-year? Okay.
How do you feel about it, Ralph?
This would be a good, good, good step.
You'd get two new trucks.
And we still haven't heard anything on the grant yet either, so those grants are still active. They're still in the system. We haven't got a, an I'm sorry letter, anything like that on any of them that's going out right now, so.
Are there any partial grants maybe available through, like the Firemen's Union or anything?
Not that I know of. Larry Stonyford, union presence here, nothing like that. The main grant we go after is what they call the AFG, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, through FEMA. And that's what we want after these projects with. And one of the project, one of the criteria is that.
In the engine you've had in the past, what's the biggest problem that you've had with a breakdown of part of the truck? What's the biggest thing that you've all noticed?
An injector pump is one of the things that costs us the most. And all the new engines they have out there, everything's computer-operated and everything, computers tied in everything. And I think that's going to be our biggest problem in the future as the technology changes. I think that'll be what causes us ahead of.
Will they offer any sort of training for a mechanic on this?
I talked to the, one of the companies, and they do have some training available for a mechanic.
Be up-to-date on it?
Yeah. We'll just have to get them to, they have regional deals, the closest I have to find right now is one of the companies that's up in Wisconsin. They'll just be getting them up there, depending on the cost of the school. We may be able to talk to them, whichever company we go with, and maybe they'll talk to them and see if they will put that into the project.
Were you able to vote with them to do some production or?
No, Mike. Once the council gives us direction on this here, we will, we'll talk to that company.
They're still there.
So as of today, they're still there.
Do you know what the difference is between, on the, on the front page, it says one-year workmanship in materials, and on the back page, it says six-year on material workmanship? I didn't know, I didn't know what it referenced to. On that particular, if it's on one bid sheet, that particular one doesn't reference a differentiation from one to the other.
This is just end of the spec packages that they, what the company sent us and everything. It breaks everything down.
So, Chief Stucker, all you need to know from us is if you could start the bid process, right?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I did some research on the Internet, and the city of Minneapolis had bought some Freightliner fire trucks. And what surprised me on that, the deputy chief there said they got three trucks today for the price they paid for two about 10 years ago. I'm just thinking, you know, personally, that's got to be quite a savings on vehicles. And they built them for urban use, so they'd be safe for city driving, and, you know, included them in the bid specs, and we've got the representative from the Tag Truck Company in the audience tonight, that'd be a local business that could bid on these trucks.
Could Tag bid on the fire truck or just the cabin chassis?
They build the complete trucks through them.
Cabin chassis, cabin chassis, first exit of the bed.
Sir, would you like to come up and speak about it?
Oh, yes. I'm not the one supposed to be here tonight, but anyway. I'm Rick Madden, 522 West Vine, Papa Bluff, Tag Truck Center. We would just like to enter ourselves into the bid process on our truck. Freightliner is a huge manufacturer of fire equipment, fire cabin chassis.
Okay.
Just long story short, that's what we'd like to do, if possible, please.
Okay.
Bid with fire chief and get some specs or something like that.
Does that mean that the cabin chassis would be purchased and sent to the manufacturers to be fitted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And will this particular company you're working with, will they do an operation like that?
I'd have to check, but most, most all of them will do commercial or custom chassis. And along the Freightliner International, that'd be a commercial chassis.
And then, so if we did that, would we, you don't have, you don't have a truck that's currently in production that starts from scratch, correct?
Starts from scratch.
And then what's the, what's the turnaround time for that?
Six months to 15 months.
Okay. And currently, where the trucks are on the assembly line now, what's the timeline on that?
Probably two, two.
Two months, two, three months? Well, I guess it just depends on how expedient we want to be about getting the engines or not, versus two months versus what he said.
I think we just need to give him permission to go ahead and start the bidding process.
Right.
And then just go from there.
So when you do that, you know, I guess you'll drive a decision whether, at the bid process, if it's not any cheaper to do it that way, to go with them, with their truck for the two-month turnaround versus the cabin chassis in the longer timeframe. Okay? Well, now, just do that.
I'll make a motion that we give him permission to go out and bid on this new fire truck.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, give him permission to go out and bid on new fire trucks. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Motion carries. Good to go.
Madam Mayor. Susan McVeigh, 211 Kayleigh Circle, Papa Bluff. I have a question regarding these fire trucks. We've been talking about these since I was on council, so we're talking probably eight weeks. The two trucks that we had ready to go that we were going to purchase, the used ones, was there a cost involved as far as the striping, or has the city already been out money on these two used trucks?
No.
Are you sure?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Pardon?
Chief of Shiggen has said no.
Well, I can't see what's behind me. I'm addressing the council, but thank you.
No, we're not out any money on those.
Mark?
No, I'm pretty sure we aren't.
Okay. And the new trucks that you're buying, is this a lease or is it a purchase? Because with a lease, there's a residual, and you don't actually own it, then you still have to pay money. And so that's what I just, the public would like to know. Is it really a lease or is it really a purchase? Because it kind of gets all said together.
It'd be a purchase with local bank financing is what it would be, what we've done in the past on fire trucks.
Okay. So not like we talked about two weeks ago, like where it was going to be a million nine, and it was going to be a lease.
Right, right.
A 10-year lease, and it would never end.
This is just purchasing two fire trucks with a finance of over a five-year period.
Yes, that would be much better, okay. And I'm corrected, you're going to finance $600,000?
Approximately. Just depends on how the bids come in, but.
Okay. I just want to make sure we hadn't already been out quite a bit of money, plus time. I mean, this thing has gone on for so long, and then now you're starting the bid process and probably have lost those two used trucks, but.
The concern, I believe, was buying old trucks like that, they already have so many trucks that are in very poor mechanical condition that we don't know what we're getting.
I understand.
And we don't want to put our firefighters at risk, you know.
I'm not wanting to do that either. We've done that for years. We've never bought new trucks, so.
And we just think.
That's what we've always done in the past.
Right.
So, and I just wanted to clarify it, because I've gotten questions asked of me, and I just don't mind coming up here to ask you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The city council will review board applications received for city boards. Councilman Tinsley and Councilman Russian wanted to go back and review some more applications that came in. They weren't satisfied, I guess, with some of the apps that we had on file. We discussed this at the last meeting, but they wanted to go ahead and add some more, and I agreed with it too. So they're in the packet to be considered.
Madam Mayor, I think in the last meeting, we, the motion was made and seconded in unanimous vote to fill the vacancies with the applicants that come in on time.
I don't think it was made to fill the vacancies. You, it said that, just to move it to the voting session. But what they wanted to do was review the new applicants coming in, because after, after further research, it was determined that some of the applicants weren't what people wanted, I guess, and they wanted to see some more, more applicants in place, as discussed. And some of the things that were brought up weren't exactly what we thought. Did anyone want to add anything to that?
Madam Mayor, did I understand you to say that the motion was just to move it to the voting session?
And that's what it says right here in the minutes. Applications at hand and board appointments to move this item to the voting session. I thought there was a motion made that we go with the applications that had come in by the deadline. Right. So the new, so on this item right here, we're discussing the new applicants that are in. So if you want to, if they wanted to add the applicants that are on this item to, to the agenda for today, they could, because these two added them.
There were some people that had come up, and they were confused about the timing of when the applications were due. And so we felt that it was good to let the people that wanted to apply, apply, and take them all the way up to this meeting, and then look at them and apply them to the boards.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't agree with that. When there's a deadline, it needs to be a deadline. I mean, where does this stop then on a lot of things that we're involved in? People that maybe didn't have opportunity to do so.
One of the things that evening, we were under the impression that there wasn't a deadline in the ordinance after review of the ordinances. The ordinances do not call for a deadline. And that's, that's what.
He's correct in that.
That was the main, main discussion, is that we were under the impression that there was some kind of official deadline in the ordinance.
And that's what led to the motion that we are discussing at this moment. Otherwise, they probably would have went ahead and allowed the applications to continue as we had discussed.
My understanding was there was a deadline placed whenever the ad was placed, that applicants had to be in by a certain date, just like.
The ordinance don't call for that.
I didn't say the ordinance called for that. It doesn't also say that, you know, what time somebody's got to go to work on a certain day either. We just set out a policy with each department, or the department has to do at the work hours. But just like if you were, just like when you got hired at Hobby Lobby, you know, there was a deadline for you to put in an application, and if it had come in a week or two later, they probably wouldn't have considered your application.
Some, you may be, you, you two may be happy with the applicants that were on file. Some of us here would have liked to have seen a few more, and that's why.
Well, rather than, rather than running exactly like that, what we want to do is have, give the people an opportunity, the ones that serve, serve, because.
Exactly.
Not, not everybody gets a paper. And there was confusion about that. And if the discretion, if it's not in the ordinance, we felt the discretion was at hand that we could accept the, the other applications. And that's why we did it.
There are some people that haven't had the chance to serve on boards yet, that wanted to, that maybe hadn't got to serve on a board, that they, that they wanted to apply to, and they didn't know when it was due. And so they should have had that opportunity, you know.
How did they find out about the applications then?
I don't know.
About putting in an application for board?
I don't know.
Well, there was one, I don't know who it was, that someone had contacted you and asked you.
Yeah, I had one ask me about it, and I did not know the due date.
And so he asked you before that process.
Way before the process.
And then with everything, yeah. And so that was one right there that, that she was aware of. And the bottom line was to try to give the opportunity for those that wanted to serve on the boards.
I understand that, and like Pastor Sharp, you know, said, a lot of times, we can compromise on things, and even, you know, with, we filled the regular boards, and we've got, I think, two on here that were late applicants on your recommendations. And we've had, and I think Mr. Johnson had even been an ad hoc member on a board, where they could kind of get, you know, involved in it, just wouldn't have a voting deal, and they could still be involved in it and have input on it. But the ones that had their applications in on time, because I'm afraid, like Ms. Abshir, Councilwoman Abshir said, you know, we're maybe opening a can of worms, like on a bid process for a road project, if we say, well, the deadline's just there for the heck of it, then somebody puts in a bid, and some contractor waits till the next day, so I know what they are now, here's my bid. And it's lower. Do I get it?
Wasn't aware that you could add a member as an ad hoc member.
We've done, he was a, Mr. Johnson was ad hoc, I believe, on.
Board of adjustments, because the reason why they didn't.
Quorum.
Quorum, they never had a quorum, so...
And then if somebody is absent, then that person could step in, you know, and still be on that board. It'd be an extra board member on it. We did it with Dr. Holt, he had served on so many boards so long, and, I believe, Planning and Zoning, we had him as an ad hoc member on that, because he attended every meeting, did all of his research, and was a great board member and an asset to the city.
Well, the bottom line, I guess what it boils into, and we can ask the attorney, is either we have the discretion with it not being limited in the ordinance to accept applications up until the time that they're chosen, which is the first meeting of June, or not. And, you know, as far as that goes, in the last few years of, you know, me dealing with the board itself, you know, I've, I've been involved with councilmen that have told me that a lot of times, there's not a call to a vote that's hastened by, unless it's a, unless it's a grant situation, and then I witnessed where there was a call for a vote instead of going through the workshop session. So, you know, I've seen it both ways, as far as delineation from what people want to do. So, I'll let the, I'll ask the attorney to decide if we're at the discretion to accept applicants or not. If he says not, then we won't, if he says we do, then I recommend we do.
I see nothing in order, just regarding acceptance of applications, whether it's been policy or resolutions, unless there's a resolution or formal ordinance by the city council to limit the applications, then I'd say that applications could be accepted. But that could have been mainly done by tradition and policy. But pursuant to the ordinances, one thing that has to be done is they have to vote on these the first formal meeting in June, the same thing by application, so I could, you know, my advice is just, you can make the decision as, as you like in the vote, as regard to whether you're going to accept them or not. I think that's up to the city council to vote.
We have two or three good people who have applied, that may or may not, maybe more than that, after the deadline. I don't want to miss out on those people. And I don't think it's, you know, just because they may not have seen the newspaper, that's not right for them either. A little ad in the paper, not everyone reads those little tiny ads in the newspaper anymore. This is the day of the internet, and a lot of people, they don't know where those things are anymore. You know, we, we have to be conscious of that.
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Susan McVeigh, 211 Kayleigh Circle. Last time at the meeting, you all did discuss this, why do you print a deadline in the paper? And by the way, the DAR is on the internet, so you don't have to receive it in paper form, you can read it on the internet as well. But why do you print a deadline, and people follow the rules, and then you kick them off of boards because you don't want them on there? And then why do you also put people that are in the county on a board, when you have applicants that are city residents, that have applied in good standing, good faith, and on time, and then you don't put them on a board?
I don't know what you're talking about, Ms. McVeigh.
Do you want names of some of them? I mean, you wouldn't return my phone calls.
I didn't get a phone call from you.
Well, I text, you tell me you don't know who I am when I text you.
I haven't got a text from you, but thank you anyway.
Okay. Well, I, I'll show you after the meeting then.
Okay.
But anyway, there are people that have applied, I mean, I understand, you never, you never returned any calls back to me, so I understand I'm going to be put on the airport board, or the, I mean, the Black River Coliseum board? Is that correct?
Mm-mm.
Okay, am I going to be put on any boards?
No.
And I went to you after the last meeting and asked about being put on boards?
Yes.
And you're going to take someone from the county and put on a board instead of a citizen that lives in the city, that filed on time?
These, these applicants own businesses in the city that are involved in the city, and I believe they're very qualified. And as she stated, we have fine citizens just wanting to step up and take a turn, I don't know why we would turn them down.
Well, at the last meeting, when she wanted to extend the time, it was voted not to extend the time, and Mayor Pro Tim Russian said if we have enough applicants to fill, and Ms. Kirby verified there was enough applicants to fill, qualified applicants to fill, that that's what you were going to do, and then since, you recruited other people...
Well, you're wanting to put, you're wanting to go on the airport board, which is already full of people who are already on the board.
They're not all citizens, some of them live in the county.
They're already on the board, though.
So is I.
So, you weren't on the airport board...
Yes, ma'am.
According to the list that I had.
Okay.
The list that I had did not show you on the airport board, it showed you as somebody trying to remove another person that's on the airport board.
My goodness, no, I was the council representative on it.
And then, and then that's what I saw, okay? So, the people who are, who I recommended to the airport board were already on the airport board.
And so was I.
But you weren't on the list that I had to show you on the airport board.
Because I was on there as a council representative, not as a citizen. Now I'm a citizen. That's why you're, that's why you're confusing it.
Well, well, the thing is, if, if, if you're a council member, or you're a voting member of that board...
You are on that one. Not all of them, but you are on that one.
Well, I guess, I guess the confusion on that is, you know, I'm going by the same list, and again, it doesn't have you to the left of the column.
Because I was the council representative.
I understand what you're saying, but...
But now I've applied as a citizen.
I understand that too.
And I put Councilman DeGarris on that board, because he was...
He's the councilman representative, I'm asking to be on the citizen.
Right, but you're not on the council anymore.
I'm asking to be on there as the citizen.
But if I put you on there as a citizen, then you're kicking off another citizen who's already been on there as a citizen.
That does not live in the city limits.
But they've already been on there as a citizen.
But the ordinance says that the city, that the residents have preference.
If I may ask a question, I'm sure we can look back, but in your experience on the council, have you voted for someone to be on the board that was in the, in the county instead of being in the city?
Only if we didn't have a, a citizen to apply, because we always appointed the citizens first, and if we had vacancies still and had applicants, then we would then reach out to the county or the city employees.
Now, is that, is that a preference, or do you see that ordinance, Mr. Smith?
It's in ordinance.
The ordinance states in 125.030...
So, you remove a person who is on a board?
Well, let him read the ordinance.
It's applicable in this situation, it has to do with states, though, because if there's not unanimous consent here, it has probably, ordinance. G states, whenever it's in unanimous opinion of the city council, any of the foregoing provisions with regard to residency or consecutive full terms when strictly applied, will result in extraordinary harm or damage to the city, its citizens. And Sanchez says such a waiver is to be subsequently renewed, it must be done so each year. So, we've got to unanimously first agree that, that waiver is necessary, is going to be applied. So, if there's discriminative order, whether or not someone's who's outside the state limits, unless it's unanimous, it's not going to go to that point.
So you've got three people who are in the county, one of which I know is probably your ex-husband, or is that the person you're wanting to get kicked off the board?
I don't care who gets kicked off, I'm not kicking anyone off, I'm just asking as a citizen to be able to serve on a board. I applied in due time, and I think I should be allowed to do that.
All the rest of them applied in due time, too.
Some of them did not.
These did.
The Black River Coliseum, okay, then, let's go to Black River Coliseum board. I applied for that one also, and I understand that you're kicking Mitch Davis off, who is the secretary and has served finely, and yet you're not reappointing him by the same standards you're using for the airport board.
Let me interject here again, because Pam just pointed out this, also, D is somewhat applicable. D is the same city ordinance, and it says, when there's more than one person in consideration for giving position on a board or commission, shall be a policy of the city that all things between applicants being equal, priority shall be given to the person living within the corporate boundaries of the city. So, well, that's, if the applicants are equal, if they're both tied as, you know, with...
We're having trouble hearing back here.
Okay.
If you all use your microphones, we likewise could hear you.
Okay, sorry.
I don't believe that's, that's equal if a person is sitting on the board, and then you have a new applicant to remove that person, I would think that you would sway toward the person that's...
I think that's where the council's at. As to the, you know, all things being, between applicants being equal, would be a subjective decision for each member of the council to decide. Whether or not that person met the actual requirements and they were equal, then that preference priority is supposed to be given to the resident. But in order to waive that, I believe E is, G is applicable, that it has to be unanimous opinion of the city council, that the, that qualification has to be waived. So, you wouldn't know until you had a vote on whether or not, first, is that application's going to be accepted, then is that requirement's going to be waived.
And we, as the public, apply, and then only hear the hearsay until we get here tonight, and then you have to fight for a spot, because you all have met and made your decision.
No, we have not met. We have not met and made a decision.
Tonight, you've made, okay, you, you made the sole decision then, I guess.
She may, she may...
Just like what Ms., what Ed DeGarris did last year, he put it on here. Maybe that's how you and he operated last year, but that is not how I operate.
You alluded to Councilman Tinsley and Mayor Pro Tim Russian, and that's why I meant when you said that.
Well, what it goes back...
But I did this twice as mayor, so I know, I know what you're talking about.
What I go back to is, again, the issue of additional applications was to give those individuals that wanted to serve on boards the opportunity, given the fact, and I know you said the DAR is online, but it's online if you pay a subscription to it. So, you know, there's an issue there with some people.
Always going to be an issue of some sort.
Yes, I understand that.
But you're talking to somebody who wants to volunteer their time to make our city a better place. You're talking about, if you can't read a paper or go online, pay to go online, do you really want that person serving on a board? I mean, or if they wanted, if they're not efficient enough to get their application in on time? I mean, they might be very qualified people, but if they're not applying and following the rules, why are you putting them in that position? That you need to have some kind of consistency on these boards.
All of the people on the airport board applied on time.
Okay, then let's go to the Coliseum board.
The Coliseum board, all the people who have been appointed, who, who I put on the Coliseum, I, I nominated Eric Schalk and Terry Mizell, who are both...
Terry Mizell doesn't live in the city, did his application come in on time?
Yes, he did. And those two...
And he's a wonderful person, he's served on the park board many years, because we couldn't get enough people to...
Those two are new faces. The Coliseum is in the red constantly, we need changes with the Coliseum, and that is why I sought out new faces for the board at the Coliseum. I do, I do not have any problems with the, either, either of the two people who were on the board, but I felt I met Eric Schalk, I think he's a good person, and I think he would do a good job on that, on that board. Mr. Mizell's the new face, I thought both of those two would be good new faces for that board. That's why I checked them.
Both of them are excellent choices.
And they were both on time.
Then let's go to planning and zoning.
Well, on the airport board, if I might, Mitch Davis, I believe, is a city resident and has served on the board, and he's being replaced by, I guess, the county resident.
And he's the secretary.
And doesn't the ordinance say that city resident, everything being equal, unless he's already on the board?
When, are you talking about the airport, or you're talking about the...
Black River Coliseum. He said airport, he means Black River Coliseum.
And he is, I believe, a city resident being replaced by...
Okay, I see what you're saying.
That was what I mentioned earlier, I just, it's not fair to Mitch, who has served faithfully, and he's also the secretary, you've got some continuity there coming forward, to put a person, and Terry Mizell is a wonderful person, he's served on the park boards for many years, and has always stepped up to the plate to volunteer, but it's, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth when you...
My reasoning for changing, no, my reasoning for changing that board over is different from the airport board. The Coliseum suffers. Everyone here knows that that Coliseum is in the red continuously. We need change with the Coliseum. That's why we need, that's why I looked at putting new faces on the board.
My vote's always been to fill the pool and make it city hall. That's never been a popular vote, but that's what I always wanted to do, because it's lost money for years. But in five more years, it's going to be paid for.
Madam Mayor, I don't feel that the Coliseum's in the red because of the people that have served in the past on, on the board there. We've had some wonderful people that have served there, and I don't agree with that statement at all.
We can't, well, it would be good, I don't know that it's their fault, but I'm saying it could be a good thing to have new people on there and bring new ideas. That's the only thing I'm trying to say.
I understand what you're trying to say, but still, at the same time, with the way the ordinance that Mr. Smith read, that a city resident takes precedence, and we had one there that was on the board...
Well, he said the city residents takes precedence if, if all is equal with regards to the individual.
And Mitch Davis has already been on the board, so...
Just want to interject to you, just, excuse me, but they also have to be, pay taxes within the city, too. So they have to be, if they're resident of the county, they have to have, D, it says no person shall be appointed to any board or commission of the city who is not a resident of the Papa Bluff Arwin District, living within the boundaries of said district, who does not pay real or personal property taxes to the city. So that's a requirement, my understanding is that, though they live in the county, for them to be, also be on the council, be in one of the board's commissions, they have to be paying city taxes on some property.
And in your reference to Greg, he doesn't, because he lives in the county, he doesn't have a business in the city, so he only pays county taxes.
And I think the one you're talking about, Mr. Smith, I think we just changed that last year to allow some of the businesses that had, had businesses in town, and were contributing to the city...
So that's what they made...
For them to have the ability to be on the board if they wanted to.
We have many citizens like Greg West, who pays lots of taxes to the city but doesn't have a vote. This makes him eligible to serve on a board. But he would have to apply.
On the application, does it cover the fact whether they're paying taxes in the city?
It says city resident, so that should be, it's a...
Yeah, but if it's a county resident, and it's, and the applicant, will they pay taxes in the city of some type? I don't know if that's covered in the application.
I don't remember.
You would actually have, like, your business, like Randy Persons has RLP, or, you know...
I know, but the people we have on the list, I don't have a verification on them.
That's true, that's true.
You all can, you know, decide what you want to do with the recommendations that I put forward.
In the planning and zoning, everybody lives in the city.
Well, last week, I just, I understood that Mayor Pro Tim Russian said that there was enough applicants that we should fill in from that, and I was very disappointed to hear that you took applications after the deadline, and then I'm finding that you're taking off good citizens like Mitch Davis to serve. If you do not want me to serve on a board, that's fine, I'll continue to serve in the city in many other ways, but it's just not fair to other citizens, I'm not just myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Was the, when was the deadline for the applications?
May the 12th.
May the 12th.
And we have that deadline, because we do it prior to the, the second meeting in May, so we have time to get a spreadsheet together for you all to look at.
Okay, thank you.
And Robert Smith is exactly right, that is just tradition policy, something that we have done many years since before I came to work for the city.
And the council votes on this, and it was right.
So does anyone want to change anything up?
No, but I feel we need to vote on it tonight, because they were sent in on a deadline, and there isn't the first meeting, so the month is when you're supposed to vote on them.
That's correct.
And I think we need to go ahead and vote on them tonight.
They're including on, they're included on the voting session.
Okay.
Yeah, they are.
You said sent in on deadline, are you talking about the first, for the added ones, or...
The, May the 12th, wasn't it, did you say?
The list that we have in front of us, because we haven't picked out anybody from the list before.
And all, all these meant the deadline?
No.
Not all of them, very few didn't.
I think there's probably only a couple in there.
There's three.
Three.
And one of them, for sure, was an oversight from us that talked to you some time ago.
Yeah. One of them was an oversight. If she's talking, she's telling it, we're looking at the ordinance, though, if we did the airport, if we appoint a county person over a city person, though, we need to decide who that county person is going to be that is not, who, who isn't going to get that spot. spot. Someone needs to tell me who they don't want on that board.
Yeah, I think it's a top one on there.
Yeah.
Does anybody have a suggestion for who you want to omit from the airport advisory board that's a county member?
Is Mr. Smith here?
Well, I think we ought to follow the ordinance because, you know, we're back-
I'd like to know which one of these board members is the most active out of these county, because we could be, we could potentially be pulling someone off who is an amazing person on a board here. We don't want to make the wrong decision.
Well, again, what the ordinance says is, if all is equal, you go with the city board member. And to determine that-
Consider that they're on the board, then it's not equal. I see.
Well-
That's what's my point.
No, but Susan served, last she was on that board, and then these people are on that board, and she's wanting to get on there, not as a board member now, but as a citizen. So it comes back to the issue of, if all is equal, then you replace it with a city person. But I don't know how we're going to make that determination without someone from the airport board or from the airport itself to shed some light, and there was no suggestion from the body when I asked which county member they want to take off.
It'd be a recommendation from, uh, the mayor makes recommendations on these, and then it's all approved by the majority vote of the council, so.
Well, as the recommendations stand, though, that doesn't answer Mrs. McVeigh's concern. If you can't delineate that being equal versus not, then you're not.
I would think that it would be equal if she was applying at the same level, like, say it was a county person and a city person. Say she was applying with, say it was either going to be her or Mr. Mizell going for that position, then we would have to pick her over Mr. Mizell, because she was in the city and he is in the county. But these people are already on the board. She is equal to Mr. Mizell, but she's not equal to the people that's on the board, because they're already on the board. There's no openings. You agree with that?
I just don't know how you're going to, I don't know.
The other, the other issue would be, on the Coliseum board, I believe that we should leave Mitchell Davis on the board because he is a city, he is a city resident, and I, that's an oversight. Um, we should appoint Mitchell Davis and Eric Schock to the Coliseum board, because they're both city residents. Is anyone okay with that? Heads not.
Well, I, I noticed that, you know, you said on the airport board that those people are already on that board, but I see on, on another one down here that there was one that wasn't appointed back that has been on, on that board. A new person was appointed there over him.
Well, the reason why I wanted to appoint new people onto the Coliseum board was because, really, I was going to appoint new people completely, I wanted to appoint new people completely on the Coliseum board, was because I felt that we needed completely new faces on that board, so that we can have some new ideas and some fresh thinking to see if we can make some difference with that red. That's the whole thinking behind that board, changing it up.
And then, and then her revision was based on-
That's what my-
What Mr. Smith said, that, um, if all is equal, or, or less than that, then you would, you would replace, you'd put Mr. Schock on, and you'd take the left side off.
So since we're changing it up, since, since it's being changed, then you would go ahead and change it to the city person.
Talking about the Coliseum board?
Yes.
With, uh, Mitch Davis?
Yes. So you would leave Mitchell on there and go ahead and appoint Eric?
You would not be appointing Terry Mizell.
No, he's counting.
No, because he's counting.
And then on the airport board, since, uh, Ms. McVeigh served as a council liaison and has been on it, I don't have many-
I don't think that counts, because she was removed by the voters in an election, and I don't think that she would be considered equal.
As a board member, I think she would be, serving on the board. Like, that'd be like saying David didn't need to be on either boards as a council representative, because he was removed from those from the voters by getting elected.
Well, I, I know, but what, I guess the, the frame of it is, is the reason why she's on the left side of the column is because she's not a council member anymore. The situation you still have, which I brought up, this is like, you know, I mentioned like third or fourth time, is that if all is based on equal, then you would replace the city applicant with the county. And we don't have anybody from the, from the airport or the airport board that can shed any light on whether they're equal or not. And then, and then I asked a while ago from the body, who, which county member do you want to take off? And there has been no response.
Not to mention, I've heard that this airport board, at the level, the members that are on the board are really good, and it would really scare me. That's why I didn't consider switching anyone off of it. That's why I didn't think it needed anyone switched off of it.
Madam Mayor, you have a gentleman in the podium?
Oh, yes.
Matt Funky, 2512, Stone Ridge. Um, I'm currently chairman of the Library Board of Trustees, and wanted to ask, we had some appointments up, wanted to get some clarifications if those individuals who, we understood had applied, uh, and were being moved to the voting agenda last week, if those were still-
Yes, sir.
Yes.
No changes there?
No changes.
Are we going to vote on these tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to get it squared away, how this is going to be.
I recommend we leave it.
Leave it how it is, other than the Coliseum board?
Yes.
They can't hear you.
Speaking of the microphone.
I'm sorry, I said, I recommend we leave it, move forward.
Other than the Coliseum board?
Other than Mitch Davis. What was the other question on planning and zoning? Is that the other one that you had? Or utilities?
The utility was the one I was questioning.
Oh, where we had a sitting person?
Mr. Christian.
And we were replacing him?
We were replacing him with a new person.
Replacing Mr. Christian with Sam Schock?
Pardon?
We're replacing Mr. Christian with Sam Schock?
No. It looks like you're replacing, uh, Richard Landers, who went out with Sam Schock.
No, Sam Schock wasn't on the board.
He's served his maximum number.
No, Richard Landers was. He's going off because he turned out.
Right, right.
And, uh, Mr. Schock's name is right across from him, like, he would be the one replacing Mr. Landers. Uh, Mr. Christian has, is still, I think, has one year left before he terms out.
But he could apply again if he wanted to. He'd go again.
I mean, he could just stay on this year, because he's on the board, but we're replacing him with, uh, Derek Hillis, I think, which was a late applicant, or, uh, somebody that wasn't registered to vote. He's the one that spoke to us two or three months ago.
Derek Hillis was the one that wanted to apply. It was two months prior to, he asked me, and that was my fault. I did not tell him the due date and time. He has a lot of experience with utilities and that kind of thing. That's my fault that he didn't get his app in time.
So there's only one person to be replaced on the municipal utility board?
Only one, well, there was two.
One that termed out to be replaced.
All right.
And that was Mr. Landers, and, uh, she has Sam Schock across from him, which I have no problem with. Then Robert Christian, I think, still has one year left before he gets termed out, and he's getting replaced, after serving on the board for, he's getting ready to turn it out, he's been on there, what, eight years? At three-year terms?
So Sam Schock's replacing Richard Landers. Derek Hillis supposed to replace Robert Christian?
Yeah, and Robert's been on there for eight years, has one more year before he terms out.
My idea was to replace Landers with Hillis, and then, and then Sam Schock called today, and then we were going to maybe replace Christian with Schock. I originally had, had, just wanted to leave Hillis and Christian, honestly.
What's Dale Dickerson down here for?
He's not, uh, he's, he shouldn't be on that list.
Okay.
He's on Park.
All right. Thank you.
It's up to you all what you want to do with that.
Are we going to vote on these individually or as a group?
I recommend that we move forward with Schock and Hillis, and let Mr. Christian apply again if he wants to next year. You agree?
Then we're going against what, uh, a lot of the argument's been, is they've been on there and serving good, and now we're going to take them off.
So the only way in question now is the municipal utility board?
Right. And we would like to see some changes on the utility.
And that's the whole reason why it was being changed, because of, you know, these gentlemen were voted in for change.
So your suggestion, Sam Schock and Derek Hillis?
Yes.
And Robert Christian be eliminated, or?
Yes.
Okay. And on the airport board, leave it the same with same force on it?
Brian Becker, um, own and operated business at 1877 Northwest Wood. Were there only two applications for, uh, utility board?
There were.
Utility board?
There were four, but one of them was not registered to vote in Butler County.
So there, there are three applications?
Yes.
There's three, and then, three that could be considered.
Okay, and their names were?
The three that could be considered was Sam Schock, Robert Christian, and Derek Hillis. And the fourth one that couldn't be considered was Richard Johnson, because he wasn't registered to vote in Butler County.
Okay. And it is a-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to interject everybody. Mr. Schock was on the board when I was on the council before. Did a very good job running. We had, we did very well. We, we ran eighteen and a half to twenty million dollar surplus during the time he was on the board. I'm not saying it's just one person, that he has a lot of know-how. I mean, he's, you, you have to understand, I, I've known him for years. He, he, his decisions always seem to be golden. I don't know any other way of putting it.
Well, I, I would just, I'm not sure why Lieutenant Colonel of the Air Force, Rick Johnson, is not, um, registered in Butler County to vote. If, if there's a reason for that, it could have to do with his, um, military service. I have, I have no idea, but he is a citizen, and is, is that a requirement, that they are registered in this county to vote, or they just have to be a resident of the county?
Some of the boards require, I think, is, uh-
State statute.
Municipal board, I believe. I had, I believe it's, it's ordinance 700. Give me a second, I can look it up. There's, it's, it's not a general requirement, but it's a policy as to most of the boards, that they like someone to register to vote, but I believe it's a requirement of, uh, the municipal utility board. Is that correct, Pam?
State statute.
State statute. I'm getting a little confused all the time, but there's only one opening on municipal utility board?
There's two.
There's two.
Robert Christian's term is up, correct?
No, you, you could reappoint Robert Christian if you wanted to.
He hasn't termed out yet.
No.
He has one year left on it.
All right, but we got two people applying for one job, from the way I read it.
No, you have two, you have one opening.
You have three people applying for two jobs.
Yes.
All right, but why is Robert Christian up, if his term's not up?
That's not up. Well, his term is, but he's not expired. That's not the same thing.
Nothing says that we have to reappoint him. He can apply again if he wants to, the next year.
His service term is up, but he's not termed out.
You just got, you, you've got three people who want to serve. One of them's a new face who I think we need to give a chance, and that's why I'd like to give Derek Hillis a chance.
All right, but where I'm totally confused, and excuse me, Richard Landers' term is up, to be replaced by Sam Schock, correct?
Well, originally, her, originally what she said was, her thought process was Derek Hillis was going to replace the termed out Richard Landers. And then, there was a discussion with Mr. Schock.
Mr. Schock called me this morning, and he was very nice and polite, and he would like a chance on the board. And originally, I had put, I had picked, um, Christian to stay on the board, and Hillis, because Hillis is a new face, and I thought it would be nice to give him a chance. And he has experience with, in human resources and Windstream, and, you know, he, he brought a lot to the table, so.
And Johnny highly recommended Sam.
And it's not saying anything bad about Mr. Christian, it's just saying that, it's just saying Mr. Schock wants a chance to go on the board again.
So on the municipal, municipal, I can't even say it, I'm so confused. On the utility board, there's two openings.
Two openings.
Okay, correct. Now I understand, I'm sorry, but I've kept hearing Robert Christian, Robert Christian, Robert Christian. I didn't know he wouldn't.
Well, see, everybody in this column, their term is expired, and then they're signified by term limited, by the stars.
Okay.
So their term expired, but they're not term limited.
His term's expired, but he still serves very early if we elect him.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Hillis was a, a late, late applicant, but he'd, and-
But he-
Asked you all a month or so ago.
Yes, yes. That was just an error, that was an error.
I would just like to add that Mr. Schock, everybody did run. I'd like to add that Mr. Schock did very, very well with the utility board, ninety-nine to two thousand and two, when I was there, and, like I say, I'm not, it's not one person that runs the utility board, it's, it's a group of five, but he's very knowledgeable, he's able to step right in right now and make, uh, and make a difference, and that's, that's why I have talked to everybody when I've seen them, to say how much I appreciate if he was on the board.
Make this, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate all recommendations for the appointments. Mitch, on the-
Can we, you know, I, I have an idea real quick. I'm still sorry. Could we just go ahead and add Robert Christian as an ad hoc, since we had, since he brought that up?
I think he'd be valuable to keep on the board. He's been on there for eight years, and he knows everything that goes on it, and he speaks his mind and out for the, good to the city, and like I said, it's advisory board, and the council has to, you know, listen to him. We'd have, I think we'd all have great confidence in him to remain on the board.
As a citizen, um, at one point, and as a business member, I have dealt a lot with municipal utilities board. Um, I, I would say it would be very uncomfortable for someone who is a sitting member, all of a sudden become an ad hoc. So my recommendation to the council, if they are going to make an ad hoc, that they make Sam Schock the ad hoc and leave Mr. Christian in place.
If, in my opinion, if, if we were going to do that, I would recommend that Derek Hillis be the ad hoc and not Sam Schock.
I'll second that.
Is that what we want to do?
Hmm? Do we have any other questions on any other boards?
Well, back to the-
Do we add Derek Hillis as an ad hoc for, um, the utility board?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, back to this airport board. Now, I, a lot of these people I don't even know, so I'm not speaking against them personally, but what, where does this Mr. Berry live?
I do not know.
We have his application.
We can decide by who lives out the furthest.
The asterisk means he's completed one term. Is that correct?
Uh, it says what?
He should have been reappointed last year. His name got omitted, so he needs, this year he will just be reappointed for two years if you all reappoint him. He lives in Williamsville on River Road.
He lives where?
In Williamsville on- In Williamsville on River Road.
So I guess that's still in our one school district then?
I tried to look. I can't look on the Butler County map anymore.
It looks like the furthest person out would be Mr. Berry. If, you know, that would be something to consider.
Madam Mayor, I think we have discussed this for an hour. Which is unbelievable for, for this. And this is a tough decision to make. It's a decision that's, somebody's going to be mad, somebody's going to be happy. That being said, I, I'm going to speak for the airport because I was out there the other day and they do have a very good board. I met most of them. That also being said, I'm going to ask to insert Ms. Williams McVeigh, I'm sorry, to that board over Mr. Berry. She has served on the Coliseum Board for...
Actually, I was coming forward, I'll back down. You all have, have in good faith, put Mitch Davis back where I feel like Mitchell Davis will do a fine job. And you've put Bob Christian and Sam Shawk on, so I will back down and withdraw, but thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
With that being said, I would make a motion. We move this to the voting session tonight.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to move, I don't even know what item we're on anymore.
B.
Item B to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Item C, the city council will discuss a proposed lease agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the Papa Bluff Library for the library building.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, back in two thousand and twelve, the library passed their quarter cent sales tax and eliminated their property tax. And basically what happened was, starting two thousand and thirteen, they became their own entity. The building is in the City of Papa Bluff's name, but it's also listed as collateral on the two thousand and nine bond issue. What they wanted us to do was transfer deed over to the library, which we are unable to do while it's listed as collateral. So they would like us to do a five-year lease for a dollar a year. And then once that lease is up, then we can consider transferring the library building to the library. And would include that entire parking lot, that block there. And if you have any questions, the library director and the library board president are here also.
Anyone have any questions on that?
I think it's just a housekeeping agenda item more or less, just that we just need to move forward with it. Library's doing a fantastic job and just move forward with the item. I make a motion, we move that on to the voting session, I believe would be the sixteenth of June.
Second.
Motion and a second to move item C to the voting session on sixteenth of June. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will review a proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of Papa Bluff and the Papa Bluff Library relative to repayment of funds provided by the City of Papa Bluff operations from two thousand and eight through two thousand and twelve.
Yes, and this goes back to the four cent sales tax again that the library passed. It was started collecting October one of two thousand and twelve. And as I mentioned earlier, it eliminated the property tax, so there was no property tax collected for the year two thousand and twelve. What had been happening is the library would run in a negative balance and then towards the end of the year, when the property tax came in, it would bring them back up, not to exactly where they needed to be, but, but since they didn't collect that tax that year, it really put them in the hole of approximately four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And this is a, just a memorandum of understanding that they would pay that back over a five-year period.
That revenue payment is not going to put them in jeopardy. I mean, it leaves them plenty of cash flow.
I think so. You could talk to Sue.
Thank you all for letting me speak. Suzo Stack, four eight four four, Highway T, Papa Bluff. Had the privilege of working for the library now a little over a year. Thank you for your kind words. We think it's a great library ourselves. No, it will not put us in the hole. We've been trying to run very conservatively. Mayor Pearson has even sat in on some of our meetings and knows that we've been trying to operate in such a way that we can not only build up our cash balances and our reserve funds. And we will continue to be able to do this over the years. And I think if you look at the memorandum of understanding, if there are any changes that come to light with the city, then we will, that amount will be reduced in a like manner. The library has a reserve right now. We're building that reserve. We're also looking to build a six-month operational budget so that if anything should happen or any catastrophe, as any good government entity will do, they will be able to build those cash reserves and be able to operate and continue to operate in a fiscally sound manner. I want to take this opportunity also to say thank you to the City of Papa Bluff. I hope you all know what a jewel you have here. This library is one that considered very much one of the best libraries in the state for a city of its size. We operate in such a way that all of our services are higher than many cities, almost twice our size or even larger. So I think you have a lot to be proud of and a lot for us to give to the citizens of Papa Bluff. And I want to say thank you for all that the city has done for us to make that possible. So thank you. Do you all have any questions for me?
As long as you're comfortable with the payment. I just did not want to run you short at all because your facility is very nice.
Thank you.
Well-kept, it's clean, people in and out. I didn't, you know, I understand making your payments vague, but I just did not want to run you short.
This will be about nine and a half percent of our budget for the year, but as I said, we've been running in a fiscal manner. Now, amusingly, I'd like it to be zero. But thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Sue, don't go yet. This woman is a very amazing library director. We are very blessed to have her running the Papa Bluff Library and I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd make the motion, we move item D to the voting session on the sixteenth.
Second.
Motion and a second to move item D to the voting session next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. The city council will discuss proposed repairs to the Eleventh Street Bridge.
Yes, Street Superintendent Jeremy Grable came to me a couple of weeks and actually we were going to discuss this at the last meeting. I simply forgot it. I went out and looked at the bridge. There's actually a hole towards the end of the bridge. You can see a rebar, not sticking up, but sticking out. I think Jeremy's got some pictures he wanted to pass around and show. And I'll let him discuss this project and let you all decide what we need to do.
Yes, Madam Member of the council, as you can see in the photos, there is a hole there. This bridge was built in nineteen sixty, so it, for what it was built for, it served its purpose. But in today's, today's traffic and today's flow of vehicles, I don't think the bridge is capable of handling it anymore. We can repair the bridge on a rough estimate of around five thousand. A full deck replacement, which would leave the structure, we're probably looking at forty-five to fifty. Full bridge replacement, you're around two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. This was something we were going to look at and try to do in two thousand and fifteen, but it's happened a little bit sooner than what we could do.
What do you recommend, Jeremy?
It's on South Eleventh.
Yeah, depends on what the council's visions are for the future for South Eleventh. I mean, there is a lot of city property there.
Yes. That's a big, that road...
It's a major through fair. There's a lot of traffic there for a grand.
Town and country's over there. I live over there, so I know that that road has traveled very, a lot more than what people realize.
Yes.
But, you know, do you, do you think it needs to be closed? Is it unsafe?
We have, we have steel over the hole that's spreading out for the structure of it. My suggestion, unless the council sees its future plans, there would be a deck replacement, which would be, you know, anywhere from forty, forty-five to fifty thousand. The structure on the, the structure itself that supports the deck is still in good shape. With the repair, you don't know what you're going to get into until you start going back. You go back, you might have to go back farther. Then you're, then you're at a full deck replacement. But if there's visions for something down the road, my suggestion would be a new bridge.
Is this something that we contract out?
We'd have to contract this, yes. Even, even the repair of it, it would be my recommendation to contract it out. To get an engineering firm involved and contract it out.
Did you say you had some plans for two fifteen or?
I was hoping the bridge, I was hoping the bridge would make it and then try to put it in the budget to do some repairs to the bridge. But as you can see in the...
You weren't talking replacing it for two fifteen?
No, just trying to do some repairs to it, yes.
Is it safe, do you, do we need to make sure?
I'm comfortable with it, it's safe. I mean, the steel we have will support anything that comes through the drive line where the hole's at. The substructure underneath is still sound and safe. Like I said, it's just total council's decision on what they would like to try to do with it.
You're saying the deck would be a reasonable, long-term fix?
A new deck would be, yes. I mean, you've got fifty-four years right there on that deck there. But that is a, it's a fifty-four foot long bridge by eighteen foot wide. It is very tight on two vehicles.
Jeremy, if we replace the deck, have any idea about how long the bridge would be out? Because I know we'd have to close it.
I'm saying roughly six to eight weeks. Right now, most of the contractors around town are very busy. So you might be looking, you know, later down the road. Which I think the steel we have in place right now will support any traffic that comes through there.
Do you think this is something that we could wait till two thousand and fifteen in budget or do you think it really needs to be?
I think it's something we need to probably maybe get an engineering firm involved, let them do a, something on it. And, you know, somebody with a bridge, we can do on bridges.
With this being in my ward, of course, I need to speak up for the people in the area. I'm kind of, I don't like that I can see a hole through the ground.
We did, like I said, we have a piece of steel over it right now. It should support anything that comes over it.
I definitely think he's right that we need to make sure we get an engineer looking at this as soon as possible to determine where we need to go with it.
I would, I would just, I would suggest this, maybe Smith and Company take a look at it. As, as they go along, they're going to be able to give us a cost estimate. And then Mark can decide if we have the money now or if this is something that, if this steel needs to stay there six months, but at least we would have some idea.
And what I'm, what I'm afraid is what you can see in the pictures, if you just do a patch on it, you, depends on how far back you have to go to get something solid on the longitude of the steel there.
But that would get the process started having a...
At least somebody would, with a lot more bridge knowledge, would be able to take a look at it.
Right, and...
Or one of these places back here, I don't think.
Those are just surface shell offs. We passed them with asphalt. I mean, it's just minor, minor flaking on the concrete there.
That doesn't really put us, all that really does is it puts us having the engineer company give us an idea of what they think. They may go in there and find something structurally that we haven't seen even.
The, the structure of the bridge was inspected by MoDOT and they, they did pass the structure of the bridge.
Would that cost a lot of money to have Smith and Company look at that? Do we need to bend that out to have a different, you know, just to make sure that?
I mean, as far as having the engineer come down.
I mean, it probably wouldn't cost a fortune to have them look at.
The company representatives are here, they might be able to, I don't think it'd be that extraordinary. But if you do the full project, yes, it'll be something that has to be bid out.
Okay. We could have them probably take an initial look at it, but after that, just bid it out?
And if you want, I'll have to take a look at it, maybe get something back by the next council meeting for you guys.
But I'd like to see, see what the deck replacement would cost us.
Just from talking to people with the size dimensions, it's forty-five to fifty thousand. For what you have there.
Right, okay. But I'd like to see you bring back next, next meeting what it, kind of figure what it costs and what they recommend. Then we can go from there.
Will do.
Just need a verbal on that.
I think so.
Is everyone okay with that? Just have them go?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
The city council will review the city's ordinance on sidewalk repair.
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion about sidewalks in town. I actually drove through town a couple of weeks ago and last week and there are sidewalks all over town that need replaced, need repaired. At one time, we had a sidewalk program when Councilman Knuckles was on the council back in the nineties. And we budgeted, I think approximately fifty thousand dollars a year for sidewalks. I think at that point, we paid a portion of it and the residents paid a portion of it. What I would suggest at this time, there's some sidewalks that I think the street department could possibly repair without doing a lot of work. I'm not sure that, what they're going to look like when they do that, but we could let them try that and see on some of the repairs. And then let the administration come back with a more comprehensive sidewalk program, spread over the entire five wards. I know at one time, Smith and Company did a study back when we did that and I think that study's, hopefully it's still up here somewhere. A lot of those sidewalks would still be on there. So that's what I would suggest, but I'm open to any suggestions, whatever y'all'd like to do.
I think I'm fortunate, in my ward, we don't have a lot of sidewalks in where you and I live, but... So my, my portion, like I say, could go to somewhere, some of the other needier spots and there are some... I'm thinking especially the mayor's ward has quite a few bad spots down there and...
Oh, you know...
Even Ms. Abshire's ward has quite a few sidewalks and she has a lot of elderly, you know, that, that don't need to be walking out in the middle of the street, so.
What is concerning to me is the schoolchildren that have to walk home from school. And I travel down some of the roads in my ward to get my children, you know, my children, we, you know, I drop them off to school, but I see a lot of kids that walk. They don't, they can't walk on the sidewalks because they're, they're slanted in such a way that they're, they're unusable. They're absolutely unusable and they're dangerous. So I like Mark's idea to go back and look at this old sidewalk program and to, so that we could assess and see which ones are in the worst condition and make a long-term plan so that we can just slowly start figuring out which ones are the worst and maybe working with the citizens to help get those fixed here and there. I think it's a good idea.
Like I said, if it was a split between the city and the residents, and so is our, mostly on private property, and it'd be up to Mr. Grable and the street department, who'd be doing a lot of the labor. Is, that would save a lot of the expense on it if we were able to provide the labor.
And the other thing too, though, I was going to say, Mr. Grable and I were speaking about, some of the sidewalks are damaged due to ditches that have washed out from underneath. And on those, he's able to go back in and maybe lift some of those up without any, much of a cost. He's coming. He's going to explain it.
Some of the sidewalks that she is referring to, we should be able to get to where they are, can handle foot traffic. I'm not going to say they're going to be perfectly level, but they should be at a point where people could safely travel down them. Some of the sidewalks are probably past repair in the south end. The problem we have though is tying up man-hours on fixing sidewalks right now at this point. But like, like you guys said, there are some that we should be able to repair at no cost to anybody.
They're just really busy right now, so if everyone's patient, they'll be able... They're just really busy right now, so if everyone's patient, they'll be able to work them in little at a time and start working on those.
But some of them are past repair that what we can even do. I mean, the ones that we can fix, I think there's some we can fix and make to where they won't be as bad in the future.
So you could get us a working list pretty easy then?
Actually, we have went around, we went around last fall, late in the fall, and made a list of all the sidewalks in town to what we thought was satisfactory and unsatisfactory, and that we thought maybe we could repair. Some need replacement, some need repair, and we actually have a list of that at the shop.
And what we did last time was, I think we actually approached the citizens and those that were interested. We would do a five-year tax bill on their portion of the sidewalk with no interest, and they paid off in five years, some of them paid it off immediately, so.
They have been busy this year. Well, I mean, the snow, besides just snow detail, it's kind of hurt our streets some. Lot of damage to the streets and then.
Playing a lot of catch-up right now.
That's exactly, and if you go up and down Main Street as many times a day as I do, they are constantly having to work on the brick streets right now. You get one spot fixed, ten feet down the road, they've got to settle Mark from, you know, weather, old age, and as like we talked about, large trash trucks right now, the heavy trash trucks, so they're, they're trying to make progress as quick as they can make it.
And I think they're spending a lot of time mowing grass right now.
Grass is really getting us pretty good right now.
Yeah. Hit a lot of.
Jeremy, you told me that it takes one month to get around the city just to mow.
It takes one, one complete month, and that's around five tractors, and then you try to take a week in there for what we mowed a lot of. So it's six weeks turnaround time before we start back over.
And it's been raining a lot, and there's a lot of grass that's getting kind of high in some areas, but you're getting around to it.
We're just about cycled out. We're just about to be back, starting to cycle on the south end again.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on. Action-required items. Oh, did we, we'll bring the sidewalk thing back up again, I guess.
She's going to want to come back with a more comprehensive plan?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Action-required items. Bill number seventy-six ninety-three. The city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for a temporary office building at municipal utilities.
Move for first reading of seven-six-nine-three.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second for read, uh, first reading of bill number seventy-six ninety-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase of a temporary office building at and for the municipal utilities department.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Second.
A motion in a second for second reading of bill number seventy-six ninety-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase of a temporary office building at and for the municipal utilities department.
Move for adoption of bill number seventy-six ninety-three.
Second.
Motion in a second for adoption of bill number seventy-six ninety-three. Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I have a question. I, I was late last meeting due to having to work late. I understand what this is for, to replace the building or temporary for the property that we've sold. Where's it going to be located at, if I could ask?
This is, it was over across the street, my understanding.
Close to the electric building, I think. I think there's a street or road driveway that runs up through there and I think it's going to be over to the left.
And they'll be able to drive around it.
The other thing that you might not have, you might not have heard was that he, Mr. Bach told us that the idea when they wanted to purchase this was to sell it when we were done with it so that we could get some of the funds back, and he thought it was going to cost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. He thought that we could probably sell it for around eighty when we got it, so it wasn't going to be quite as much as what we thought going out into it. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Mayor Protem Russian?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Action-required item BB, bill number seventy-six ninety-four, the council, city council will take action on ordinance approving change order number one for the TRC entrance project, page one sixteen.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Roll call vote?
No.
An ordinance approving change order number one for the TRC entrance project number P-one-three-zero-zero-six-one.
Move for second reading.
Second.
An ordinance approving change order number one for the TRC entrance project number P-one-three-zero-zero-six-one.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilwoman Abshire.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Six yes votes.
Motion passed.
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen ninety-four. The city council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the airport advisory board, downtown Papa Bluff board, municipal utilities advisory board, and zoning board of adjustments.
Move for reading of resolution number seventeen ninety-four.
Second.
Motion in a second for reading of resolution number seventeen ninety-four.
A resolution making appointments to the animal control advisory board, arts and museum advisory board, fair housing committee, historical preservation commission, housing authority board, library board of trustees, park board, planning and zoning commission, and disabilities advisory board of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
I think that's the next one.
Seventeen, yes, it's seventeen ninety-four.
Okay, I'm sorry, I read these. Okay.
Let me go ahead and, all in favor of a reading resolution number seventeen ninety-four?
Aye.
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 Opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, you can read seventeen ninety-four.
A resolution making appointments to the airport advisory board, downtown Papa Bluff board, municipal utilities advisory board, zoning board of adjustment, and the Black River Coliseum advisory board.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion in a second for adoption of resolution seventeen ninety-four. Roll call.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution seventeen ninety-five. The city council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the animal control advisory board, arts and museum advisory board, fair housing committee, historical preservation committee, commission, housing authority board, library board of trustees, park board, planning and zoning commission, disabilities advisory board, and the Black River Coliseum advisory board of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for the reading of resolution number seventeen ninety-five.
Second.
Motion in a second for the reading of resolution number seventeen ninety-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Smith?
A resolution making appointments to the animal control board, excuse me, a resolution, let's start over. A resolution making appointments to animal control advisory board, arts and museum advisory board, fair housing committee, historic preservation commission, housing authority board, library board of trustees, park board, planning and zoning commission, and disabled advisory board of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion in a second for adoption of resolution number seventeen ninety-five. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution number seventeen ninety-six. The city council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the plumbing board, electrical wiring board, building standards board, and the heating and air conditioning HVA CR board of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for the reading of resolution number seventeen ninety-six.
Second.
Motion in a second for a reading of resolution seventeen ninety-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution making appointments to the plumbing board, electrical wiring board, building standards board, and the heating and air conditioning board of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion in a second for adoption of resolution seventeen ninety-six. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Item FF. The city council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law, section six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-point-one, RSMO relative to litigation, and six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-point-two, RSMO relative to real estate.
Mayor, I make a motion, we move to closed session after the city manager's report.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to move to closed session after the city manager's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't have a lot to report tonight. If any of you were in town Friday night, you probably saw helicopters flying around, or at least one helicopter. My wife and I were out for a walk, and I felt like they were following us, but I just wanted to thank the city of Sykes and Cape Girardeau and Charleston and our Papa Bluff police department. They made a drug sweep that like, last night, or that Friday night, and I think arrested over twenty-five people. It's unfortunate we have those people in our town, but we're fortunate to have those people to help us out, and just wanted to say thank you.
I'd like to add, I know it's not been that long ago, we recently just entered into that agreement with those law enforcement agencies, and I think they've already been somewhere else and had a little sweep, and it is unfortunate we have those here, but criminals know no boundaries. That's what they've always done over the years. Butler County, they just stepped across the line, Stotter County, this, working, everybody working together, they're going to, should have a definite impact on the crime and the drugs that's trafficking through our city.
Our police department, they do a very good thorough job. We're very proud of them.
I'd like to thank the cemetery workers with the street department on having the cemetery in excellent shape for Memorial Day. We put flags out there, and it was bowed and clean, it was very beautiful, so they did a good effort. Thank you very much for that from this council.
You?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.